Evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to tonight's Planning Commission. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Newman to lead us all on the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you'll please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you Brenda. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Haschler?
Here.
Commissioner Wingate?
Here.
Vice Chair Newman?
Present.
Chair Baldino?
Here.
Okay, that brings us to Agenda Item D. This is Public Communications. This is your opportunity to address the commission on anything that's not already on the agenda. So I'll open Public Communications. Alright, seeing no one show up, I'll close Public Communications. Uh, nothing for us on the consent calendar. So that brings us to Written Communications, Agenda Item G. Anything new that was not in our packet today?
Not this week.
Alright, well, let's get started. Uh, first item of business is H1. Consideration and possible approval of a Smoky Hollow Site Plan Review and Adjustment to Reduce Required Parking Space and Wave Loading Space Requirement. We're talking about an address of 216 Standard Street. Um, and before we have our staff report, let me disclose, one second. Uh, I had a conversation with Emily Lane, the applicant, where she contacted me because she had a situation where they had submitted plans, uh, said things were okay, and then told things had to change. And so I talked to Greg McLean, uh, he told me the same story. So I told the two of them to talk, and that was pretty much the extent of my involvement until what we have here today. So with that, is there a staff report on this matter?
I also have a disclaimer. I was contacted by Emily Lane and listened to, uh, her position on the property and the concerns around it as well. Just, uh, as an FYI.
And I walked the property.
Jay's been to the Standard.
I shopped at the surf shop that was there. That count.
Alright, thank you. And can we have our staff report, please?
Okay, good evening Commissioners. Uh, this is a Smoky Hollow Site Plan Review, maybe one of the last under the old Smoky Hollow specific plan. Um, it is in the west end of it, so it's in the small business zone. This is what it looked like last week. And here is the proposed building that's gonna be constructed. There it is from the rear. There's about a ten-foot grade difference, sloping towards the rear of the property. Uh, here's a picture of it. It's a little misleading because when this picture was taken, there was some sort of makeshift, uh, cover over the back. That's, that's really not there anymore. Um, so that's a six-hundred-and-thirty-eight square foot commercial building. Both buildings were built in the fifties. This one is a little duplex built in nineteen fifty-five, two little patios in front. So the approvals required for this project. First, the Smoky Hollow Site Plan Review. Staff believes the design meets the intent of the design guidelines of the specific plan. Normally, this is done administratively. Um, and two adjustments. One is the removal of required loading space. Normally, this is done administratively as well. The second is a reduction in required parking spaces. So here's the site plan. Um, you can see that existing commercial building on the left, the little duplex in the back, and there's a new L-shaped two-story building being proposed, twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, the loading space adjustment, so this, um... The code requires that a loading space not, uh, block vehicular or pedestrian circulation. It also requires that it be screened from public view. And, uh, just giving the constraints of the site, um, it, staff didn't find it prudent to put it in any of those places that would block backing up, um, especially blocking the ADA space. And given the size of the driveway, you know, fifty-seven feet deep, twenty feet wide, we figured for the occasional, you know, pickups and drop-offs, there is enough space. The parking adjustment, so seventeen-point-eight percent reduction is requested. Uh, twenty percent, um, up to twenty percent reduction is allowed by the code, by PC approval. And staff believes that the architects come with a reasonable design solution, given the limitations of the project site, given the limitations that the existing buildings already there cause. So our recommendation is to approve the resolution. And if you have any questions, staff is here, as well as the applicant.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I do. They talk about, uh, or think about tandem parking. Is it an option? Is it possible anywhere on that site plan? That's my first question. The second question is the, the storage unit and your parking are one and the same as you've calcu- as you've used your calculations? Um, and I was just curious about that.
Okay, uh, regarding the tandem, we have the site plan up there. It would cause, obviously would cause onsite circulation problems, and this...
But tandem parking always does, so...
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, so nothing would be stopping people to use that space as parking, but to dedicate it as required spaces to satisfy the code?
Well, what's, what's the difference? All I'm saying, if we're satisfying code and they add paint, then, then we've done it. Otherwise, we wouldn't actually need a, an adjustment, would they?
Well, it still would require an adjustment. Adding the paint would actually nullify the code. It would be, it would be, um, creating a space in the backup of another space and therefore cancelling them, and so...
Is that how tandem's done?
Well, eh, the only place you could do tandem would be across the top of the, the diagram there, along the property line on the north side.
Uh-huh.
And that would, that would impact the, the two spaces at the bottom, one of them being handicapped. They, they would have a very hard time getting out if there was a car parked there. The only other place you could park a, uh, another space would be fur- closer to the, closer to the street in the driveway, but...
By the stairwell?
Yeah, either by the stairwell or on the other side, by the property line. And in both cases, it creates a little bit of a maneuverability issue because we're not dealing with a lot of space there. So, given that, the reality is somebody may park there, but we can't officially condone it because it would not meet the, the standards of the code. So if somebody does park there, that's their property, that's their business. They can do that. But we can't make it real, uh, we can't make it legal by painting those spaces in.
And, we'd come to see you, Russell, to ask about the four spots down below that sort of served the property. Then those four spots, uh, needed to be put somewhere. So it went to the apartments because, um, that, that code changed, right? And at some point, you adapt, you, you took those four spots and put them to the part, to the apartments. But there was never any parking for the commercial part of the property because the assumption was you have all of that open space, and there was plenty of parking.
That's part of the story. Um, also, at the time when the commercial building, the little, the little building in the front that exists currently was built, no parking was required. Even though there was a field between the apartments and the, and the building that people could and did park on, none was required. And when the houses or the apartments were built, one space for each was required, but two were built for underneath.
Right.
The codes changed in that regard quicker, so they, they required two after a while, so then basically all four of those became assigned to the residential units. And then later, the codes changed for the commercial part requiring parking, but that gained a non-conforming status. The residential part never gained a non-conforming status, and this is the root of the problem that, uh, the chairman had, uh, alluded to earlier. We had assumed they were non-conforming, but upon closer examination, it turns out that they were conforming when they had one space each, and they were conforming when they had two spaces each. So they don't get the special protections of non-conformity. But those two spaces underneath each unit are now assigned to those units.
And what if that front building were not considered retail or commercial? That would be another, another way that they would not need as many parking spaces to be forgiven that they don't have? If it were office or light industrial like the rest of their property will be?
Well, no, it would still be, it would still be, according to the code, non-conforming and not required to, to come up to code for that portion of the building. Only the new part has to provide parking. Any use, even residential at this point. Once they had, um, achieved the point where the parking onsite was equal to the demand, everything beyond that is non-conforming. So, the code says that when you have a non-conforming structure and you add on to it, you only provide the parking for the addition. It doesn't specify that only applies to retail or only applies to office or anything else. It applies throughout the city.
But there's still a real lack of parking? Or the new addition?
If this were all built new, yes, they would have to provide even more parking because that existing building would then require parking. But the code specifies that they're exempt from that. So that's pursuant to the municipal code. We're not asking for any considerations with regard to that.
No, we're not asking for parking for the front building. We're asking for parking for the back building, or the addition.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and there's a, there's not enough parking for the addition?
And they're asking for a, for a, um, reduction in the parking as well, yes.
Right.
They're short, one space.
I have a question, but how can the handicap parking be behind a roll-up door? In an enclosed garage?
We've, we've done this on more than one occasion, and, uh, the, the example, what was it? On Penn Street, I think, we had the similar situation. My understanding, and I'm not an expert on these things, but my understanding is that when the business is open, that space is available. But when the business is closed, it doesn't need to be available anymore. So when they're open, they have to roll the door up.
Do you have to have a sign? That it must be open or door unlocked, or, you know, back doors unlocked during business hours? That kind of thing?
We can require that. I mean, you can make that condition if you want.
Well, it doesn't make any sense to have a handicap parking stall behind a closed door.
I, I completely agree. I think that it would be an appropriate condition of approval.
You know, I think it's a beautifully designed building. I think it would be a great improvement to that, that lot. I'm just very concerned about parking because if we're going to have in-lu parking fees and, you know, we're talking about one-way streets and angled parking, this isn't helping.
That, that may be so. This, this particular block would not be subject to that.
Oh, I understand that, but, you know, the next block over would.
Yes. Well, a lot of what's going on here is, is pursuant to the current codes, which, as, uh, Russell had indicated, will be changing if the Smoky Hollow specific plan is adopted. This will be the last time we have to look at the, you know, the interior configuration of the buildings and try to figure out how much of it is storage and how much is industrial. And it, it's a bit of game playing.
Greg, could you explain to us with the new Smoky Hollow plan in place, how this clean slate in place, what would the difference be?
What we would do in that case is we would take the square footage of the new portion of the building, because that part's not changing, and we would just apply a flat rate of one per four-hundred.
And how much parking?
I think that works to their disadvantage, which is why this is going through now.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, we'll, we'll move on.
Any other questions for staff?
Probably for the, uh, applicant.
Okay, so let's open up, uh, Pla- Communications. The first right will go to the applicant, so, applicant's here. Anything to, or the representative? Just, uh, step up to the microphone, tell us who you are, please.
Yeah, my name is Tony Chung. I'm with, uh, Saga Architect. Um, so I'm the project designer for this project. But, um, I think, um, the owner, Scott Lane, he would like a short statement, so I will...
Okay, you're with Saga, that's, uh, Frank Glenn's firm.
Frank Glenn is, uh, he's the principal and boss.
Okay, and he's designed a lot of buildings in Smoky Hollow over the years, right?
Right.
And so he's very familiar with tandem and triple tandem?
Yeah, we just, I think, not long ago, in six months, at that time, we have another project, and one forty Sheldon.
Right.
Which is my colleague work on.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Hello again. Um, I am Scott Lane, uh, one of the, the owners. And it would be my company, and just a little bit about us is, we've been in El Segundo, family construction company. Been here since nineteen fifty-nine started, so we are a local company. We've been around and we're here to stay. We're gonna be in El Segundo, and that's where we wanna be. Um, it wasn't too long ago that this opportunity came to us with a friend, so we have a, a partner. So there was partner and us, and this is our opportunity to purchase a building. And it is a wonderful location, and as you can see with the design, we're excited to be in this location with a good-looking building, much better than what was there, better than the surf shop, so, um... We, we, this has been a process, and we've learned a lot. And, you know, we've gone through and we, we thought we had the go-ahead, and we started to do this. We even got to the point where we had the plans, the soils, engineering, and we were going, submitted, and there was a little bit of a hiccup. Um, but, uh, and we've looked at other stuff like the tandem parking that didn't fit the use that we have. And we are really, um, kind of unique for this property, which we think suits us because we are a construction company, and the other one is a mobile, he's a mobile welder, so he's not onsite. Now, our, now a question about the handicap, uh, parking in behind doors is really a security issue. Park our trucks there at night and wanna be able to lock them up. Last week, my house was broken into, had half my tools stolen. So being next to the bar, and we've had issues, and we've put up cameras to kinda detour them, that's been one issue that has gotten better, just with that application. But, uh, we are really, um, um, looking to this. We looked at other avenues and other options to kinda fit the parking, and really the seventeen percent boils down to one and a half, uh, parking spots, which is an exemption, but hopefully not as much as the seventeen percent sounds like. Um, and...
How many trucks do you have?
Um, well, my company owns eight trucks. They all go home with the employees. I have my own truck that goes home with me, and I don't store any trucks onsite here. Um, the partner has two trucks, and the mobile, and a lot of equipment is on his truck, so... And this where the light industrial is, that's part of the problem, is we've needed, uh, access to the light industrial so he can park his vehicle inside there and, and lock it up at night.
You said he has two vehicles?
Yes.
And so he would use both of those?
The enclosed parking on the top, and then the light industrial, and then there's another parking spot next to the handicap.
Mm-hmm, okay, just wanted to be sure.
And really, when it's locked up, like you said, we could use, utilize other areas that's not in use, but, um, and we still have, there was four, um, parking spots that were with the apartments, and two of them aren't used. They were rented out before from the prior owner. Two of them are used with the apartments, two of them sat empty for a while or were rented out. And we utilize those ones. So downstairs, the apartments, they just don't use it. It's a small one-bedroom. Half the time, they don't even want the parking, they don't use it. So it is kind of a unique companies, getting a unique, uh, property with a unique building. Hopefully the, it can work.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you're, you're presenting a, a wonderful project. I mean, it's a, it's got great vision, and certainly with Frank Glenn at the helm, it, that's why the property looks so good. Great, great effort on your part. Um, typically, your guys with the eight trucks will make their way into the office in the morning and pick up their needs. So you've got storage there, then you send them out to their respective jobs that they do.
We meet at six in the morning, and they're gone by six-thirty, six forty-five. So it's very quiet when we are there.
Yeah.
And in all honesty, I don't want people over there. So it's kind of a, um, not a, it's not a customer-based retail where people are coming in.
Right.
Clients, it's a...
Right. You used to be up on Richmond Street, and it, and it worked just fine there because you had only street parking for the guys in the mornings anyway, right? I mean...
Yes, and that's part of the reason, parking. If I did have all these trucks at a store, that would be a problem, but I don't.
Yeah.
It, I'm, I think where we can, I can send them off, give them the trucks, and that's the route we went to.
And to your credit, you have more parking there than you had at your offices up on Richmond Street. Because that was, that was, you didn't have any parking up there, did you?
Zero.
Yeah.
So you had the same amount of trucks on Richmond with no parking?
Um, we actually have one more than what we were at Richmond, but truly don't have those onsite at all.
And where's your partner located now?
Excuse me?
Where's your partner located now?
He is, he's totally mobile, so he does not have a place or an office that he works out of.
But he puts his trucks someplace?
At his house. He drives it.
And he's in town, too?
He is in town.
Okay, so when it says existing commercial, that's your construction company, right?
We have, use half of that portion for our office.
Okay, but there isn't like, in the generic term of commercial, there's no retail, so it's not like you need a, a parking lot for consumers on this lot, correct?
Correct.
And then the industrial is the mobile welder guy?
Yeah, and the storage is part of the whole area. That's where he's gonna be storing his materials, any tools, you know, but kinda like a lay-down area for his, it's all one room, but it's just gonna be a route.
So the light industrial's his workshop. It's where he gets stuff done up there?
Yeah.
And then he goes out with the mobile?
Yep.
Clients don't come to him and say, "I want you to help me with this, create this." People don't usually come to you, do they, or to him?
No, he is onsite. They, they don't go to his house now, and they...
Yeah.
Goes out to them and, you know, signs and does all the fabrication onsite.
Okay, and then you also own the apartment buildings on this? And you said that two are being used, but you as the landowner have the right, or you are using the other two, if you wanted to? Okay, alright. And you think this will work for your business and your partner's business?
We are very happy with this, yep.
Alright.
Yeah, my concern, and I see where this is working really well for you, is if you leave. And somebody else takes over the building, and then...
And...
You've got customers coming in, and there's no parking for them.
I can understand that concern, just like any other property, but been here sixty years, and hopefully, I still have kids here, I still have to work, and, and this is, I need a place.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's, that's something, I can't say I'm gonna stay there forever if something bad happens.
If your tenants, if your residential tenants turn over, and somebody comes in, and do you only give them one parking spot, or do you give one up?
Since we've purchased this property, one person has left, and we had to get a new tenant, and he did not want parking. We kind of had to get him to take the parking so that we could charge more rent for that.
How big are those units? How big are the residential units?
Um, they're under six-hundred square feet.
Oh, okay.
Pretty small.
Are they studios?
One-bedroom, yeah.
Okay.
But there is no problem renting them out. There's a lot of calls.
Yeah, that's good. And I'll ask the million-dollar question. Um, the, you know, gi- given the considerations and, and, like you, you know, having purchased a building in this town that you're so proud of, and your heritage and your history, you've had a longstanding business, um, it, it's a, it's exciting, really exciting times. And I'm gonna ask you the million-dollar question about, um, in-lu parking fees. Um, you know, no handicap, um, I mean, uh, loading zone, you're not gonna need it, although you're gonna get deliveries, because that's the nature of every business. You're gonna get deliveries. Where, h- how do you feel about that? And I know that that's the million-dollar question.
What we do, we build, construction, deliveries that I get are Amazon, UPS, FedEx, anything that's large, big, is on the job site. So it's another unique avenue that we have that, you know, we're not gonna be, even the, the, as, as welding, he doesn't do structural welding, which is a large type, big trucks. You know, it's, it's small pickup trucks that would be, um, doing that. And then, again, he's small and he's mobile. You don't get the big deliveries there, because then you have to move it.
Well, he must have a partner, because he's got two trucks, so he's got a guy...
He's got an employee.
Yeah, employee. And you guys have how many? Not the guys that take the trucks home, but you guys have how many in the office?
Uh, it's really two of us in the office. So that's...
Y- y- your wife's doing this back there.
Yeah, she, she works, too.
What, what does your metal shop guy weld? What kind of stuff does he do?
Ornamental, hand wa- handrail, a lot of stainless, aluminum, glass, and...
Alright, but if you did need, if you needed a bigger shipment, there's plenty of room for a truck to get in there, unload, get out.
of room for a truck to get in there, unload, get out?
It could. If the Domino's guy comes in and he pulls into Domino's and that's a big truck, sometimes they go on the street, sometimes they pull, depending on what time, that would be possible in ours, but we would not order that much material.
It's a lot of pizza.
That's a lot of pizza for you, that's right.
I want to answer Brenda's question. So the in lieu, you know, this is hard for us. You know, C.C. Lane Nexus is our partner's company, has never owned a building. We are very excited at the opportunity and we were lucky to be able to partner together. You know, Matt was born and raised here, Scott born and raised here. It was their intent to stay here. And when the opportunity presented, there's not many opportunities in El Segundo. So when an opportunity presents, you jump on it because if you don't, someone else is going to. So yeah, there might have been better places for us in El Segundo, but that opportunity didn't present itself. And the in lieu, you know, it's taken everything we have to get into the building and it's taking everything we have to build this and make it doable for our two companies. That in lieu fee is just not possible for our small companies. I understand that it's an option and for, I think for a lot of companies, maybe your big breweries that come in, they, you know, they have the capital to come in and to do that. We don't. And that's why I respectfully, I understand that that is an option for a lot of people, but with our small two companies and, you know, dads with kids in town, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand a space, we can't build the building that we would like to build. And I do think we are adding to Smoky Hollow and I hear all the plans, but that's, for the in lieu, that's that million dollar question is for us, small companies, it's just not possible and why we're here.
Right, but just to be clear, the Smoky Hollow plan has even, has it been approved by city council yet? Okay, so we're talking about the old plan and as I said, you're probably one of the last ones, but we'll have to kind of put the puzzle pieces together and see what works for you, what works for the neighborhood and all of that. So as much as I appreciate the comments, the parking in lieu, they haven't decided how much that's going to be.
Right.
But you guys, it wouldn't apply to you because you're in under the old plan.
It is, but when this, when, you know, we were cruising, cruising and when the hiccup came, the option was, well, you guys could wait and then that might be an option soon, but you know, we're ready to go. We have a loan, we're trying to get going on the building and we are already engineered and we're really at a stalemate waiting.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for applicant?
Architect Tony's the amazing man that put this for us.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission during public comments on this? All right, I'll close public communication. All further comments will come from the dais. Comments, anyone?
Well, I think timing is in their favor, for sure. I'm excited for them for a lot of reasons and I think they've explained that, you know, taking the opportunity, finding the right location for them, creating a workable space that will work for them and they are going to be here for a long period of time. Of course, I think like Carol brought up, that's where you run into problems, which is why you hope for the right move with the Smoky Hollow plan so that you don't have to worry in ten, twenty, thirty years when this property comes available, that it comes with all these rights that are, that are grandfathered in, which they already have. They've, they're experiencing that, they've already got that. So, you know, a lot of buildings in town have that and that's just the nature of where we're at. But I am, I am certainly amenable to this since they've explored tandem parking. There's no way to get additional parking without giving up something. We don't want to tack on that, you know, to make a non-conforming property conforming, how are you going to do that? So I'm amenable, I'm excited for them. I think it's, at this stage, they've explored it and certainly staff has explored it.
Yeah, I'm, excuse me. I'm tending to agree with you, Brenda. I had real questions about this when I first looked at the plans, but I think if, if we have two small businesses that stay two small businesses that aren't doing a lot of work on the site, that sort of makes all this possible and with the chance that there's one or two additional spaces available underneath the apartments, just stay here for sixty more years, okay?
And don't stay small, grow, grow big.
Yeah.
Well, but if you do add some parking spaces, you know, it's one spot. I also know you guys have big trucks and if you've got ten of them, you meet in the morning, you're not affecting anyone else's traffic, but you're on when you're kind of stacked in that driveway. You know, I suspect you're going to pack a few trucks in there at six o'clock in the morning and get your coffee and give your marching orders and everyone's going to leave and, you know, hopefully that is not a real issue because it's all happening right on, right on your property. But it seems like the right solution for this property.
Yeah, I would agree and I've seen a lot of, I'll say, creative Smoky Hollow designs come through the commission, which is why we push so hard to get a revised Smoky Hollow plan, to bring it into what the vision is we have because we did a lot of spot zoning. And in this instance, I can see how it's going to work for the owners, how they've put the thought into what is right for them. And with respect to it being sold, I mean, that would apply to any building. I mean, we've got triple pant, tandem spots out there in Smoky Hollow, which I think, you know, are just never going to work. But overall, it's a beautiful looking building and it'll be a nice addition to that part of the town. So I'm in favor for it. So are there any other comments? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion.
Did the commission want to add a condition of approval regarding the handicap space? Just for clarification or no?
Yeah, I'll do that. I make a motion, we approve EA dash one-two-two-zero-SHSP-R-eighteen-dash-zero-one and ADJ-eighteen-dash-one with the provision that the roll-up door for the handicap space has to be open during business hours.
Well, let's, hold on, before we add a commission, let me open public communication again and see if the applicant's okay with it before we...
That's a great idea.
Yeah, so let's reopen public communication. So there's discussion about keeping your roll-up door open or handicap parking. How does that work for you?
Our biggest problem being next to the bar is everyone likes to use our lot. They think it's an open parking lot. So, you know, my real condition is if we are not there and I don't know how you determine business hours, so if it was, if we get to determine our business hours, but if it's nine to five business hours and we leave a truck and we are gone for the day, it makes me very nervous to have any form of our stuff open, unfortunately. And as my husband mentioned, you know, our, this truck was parked at our house just last Sunday and we were gone and it got broken into. They went to our backyard and took a lot of stuff, so I'm a little bit, right now, I'm scared.
So you're talking about the trucks will be parked inside the bays during the day and closed?
Usually, we really don't park there, but at nighttime, we might leave one, we might something. And that was our whole goal of the roll-up doors, that if we're not there, we can lock everything down and keep everything safe. The roll-up doors is not anything silly besides safety.
Security.
Security and safety.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. It's not public parking. I mean, it's their private parking.
That's, that's the thing, it's not a retail or your traditional commercial. It's a private business and the trucks will be, they will be their trucks. And I think it would, it would be detrimental to say you have to keep your doors open or your business open because now you have to have somebody there so that some guy from the bar doesn't come in and grab a wrench or...
And also to clarify, because it's private, even though that's an ADA spot, they can park a non-ADA vehicle in that spot, is that correct?
Yes and no. When they're, when they're, when they're not open, you know, when they're closing for the day, they can park whatever they want there and lock it up, yes.
But they could also close from eleven to three on Monday. They can close from, they can close anytime they want.
Anytime...
Their hours are their hours.
Anytime they're not there, they could roll the door down and leave a truck on the handicap spot. But when they, when they are there and someone is staffing the place and in the off chance that some customer comes and has a question whether it's legitimate or not, that handicap spot would need to be available.
So I would think that you would be able to determine your own business hours, it's your business.
Half of my day, I'm about the only one that sits at the office all day. I spend half the day walking outside because I hear doors close, I walk out and tell everyone, this is not the bar parking. We'll come on, like on a Saturday morning and there's cars all over our lot because they can't drive home Friday.
Have you ever thought about...
We're going to put a gate.
I was just going to ask you that because that's a very, a very good way to retrain them.
It is and we're, you know, as finances recover, we've got a lot of things, you know, we just got security cameras up and then we're trying to do this, but yeah, it's very frustrating in all honesty. The bar people are great. I'll go in and talk to them, they'll help me out as much as they can, but it, and people will come in and they'll park right in the driveway, not even go to a parking spot. They'll just come and stop and so that was why we wanted the roll-up doors, is to control access because we were hoping that if they didn't see parking spots when we're not there, they won't just leave their cars because if they see a parking spot, they think they can park there.
Yeah, you'll need a private property, no trespassing.
Put up all that just two weeks ago because I'm tired of it. I would walk into the bar and say, "Whose car you're blocking?" And no one would say anything until I say, "Okay, I guess I have to tow." And then, "Oh, wait, 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 it's mine." That's, I've spent too much time.
So do you have an objection to having the door open during your business hours, which you determine?
My only objection, like, which goes with anything is if I roll in just for by myself to do something real fast and someone comes by and wants to nail me on a code, I don't want to have to do the thing up and down. It's just, it's sticky. When, if everyone is playing nice and everyone understands what it's there for, I just get queried and I, I say this, I'm on the school board in town and we have to be really careful, like, you know, we just got hit by a lawsuit from someone that doesn't even live in this town on some voting things. You know, it just, when the more you put onto something, the more it leaves it for one community member that has a beef with Emily Lane and wants to find something to come after me on. That is my concern.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need the extra condition. I think it's a private business used for mostly industrial purposes. I mean, construction is about as industrial as you can get, but I also don't want to create more problems than, than what we're trying to accomplish by letting them utilize this land to its most and best use for what they have in mind. So I'd rather, you know, the conditions, I mean, this has been a long process where they were, they had the green light, they were told, "Now you can't do it," so now they've compromised and come to this. So I think, you know, if we're going to approve it, we approve it as it was negotiated between the landowners and the city staff. Staff says they're in favor for it. So I would, I would prefer not to put any additional restrictions or conditions on it. That was my two cents.
Okay, I'll drop the condition.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve. You had it all pretty, Carol.
Mr. Chair, I believe, I believe Commissioner Wingate already made the motion.
Yeah, but she made the motion with the additional condition. So I'll move to approve without any additional conditions. Is that clear enough for staff?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, four zero. Okay, thank you and congratulations.
Yes.
That's a final, final decision by the planning commission that's subject to appeal within ten days.
Thank you, Mr. King. Okay, agenda item number two is consideration and possible approval of subdivision for vesting map number seven-eight-two-two-seven to split two existing parcels into five proposed lots. We're talking about the address at twenty-one-hundred-and-twenty-one-nine-eight El Segundo Boulevard, the previous Raytheon site. And do we have a staff report on this?
The applicant has requested this item be continued to a date uncertain. They, they had a little bit of an issue with the tenant that they had proposed to have there and when they have a new tenant, they may want a slightly different configuration.
Okay, so I'll accept a motion to continue the item to a date to be determined.
So do.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And just for the public's benefit and knowledge, when we continue something to a date uncertain, we will go through the full notification process again.
Thank you. Okay, next is consideration and possible approval of a coastal development permit and adoption of a negative declaration regarding the El Segundo Power Plant located at three-oh-one Vista Del Mar. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, good evening Chairman and members of the planning commission. This is environmental assessment number eleven-ninety-six and coastal development permit seventeen-oh-one. The site is in the coastal zone. We have a local coastal program. The site is directly west of Chevron. It's the southwest corner of the city. This was previously the Edison plant. Today, it's NRG. The site has gone through several changes and there was a, there, there were units that have been decommissioned and demolished and unit one and unit two have been demolished already and in the process, there have been tunnels that have been plugged. So we also have unit three and four, unit three and four, which are down here, are decommissioned, but they still stand. So I want to just show you a little more of what's not obvious. The tunnels go out all the way two-thousand-six-hundred feet into the ocean. The tunnel, the tunnels for one and two are these and these have already been plugged and they were approved to, unplugged in two thousand and eleven. So today, this application is to now plug the southern ones for unit three and four. The site is fully secured. It has a seawall and a fence and there's a bike lane you could see here on this side going north and south in each direction that connect to the beaches along the west and Pacific Ocean views. The further southern portion of the property line has chain link. And the, the main project is primarily, the divers are going to enter the tunnels from a four bay and they'll be installing steel dowels in the tunnel walls. These tunnel walls are going to have drilled steel rods and then they'll install a steel framework to act as a block so that they could then come back and add marine grade concrete to create a plug. And the plug is going to be about five feet deep. After the, the concrete has cured, the residual wattle will be tested in the four bay and before disposal to an offsite, they'll decide whether it has to be back to the ocean or to an appropriate facility that can handle the contaminated water. And the contamination would be primarily from the acidity of the lime that's in the concrete. So this is what the property looks like from the seawall side. Here's the bike lanes. The four bay is this right here and over here, this is the actual four bay. This is where the divers are going to jump in and crawl down or get all their equipment through. All work is going to take place under the water. Nothing's going to go beyond the seawall. And the main reason why this project is here is because the project site is within our local coastal plan. The facility is allowed to be modified as long as the recreational development is maintained. We have to make sure that there's no interference for public access. The public has a right to access the sea, sand and shore. The coastal land is also protected for public use and recreation. The project complies with these conditions because all work is going to take place underwater. No changes are going to be made to the access to the beach or the rocks or the sand or the shore or the water in the ocean, so surface will continue. We had an initial study... Um, we had an initial study and because it's not exempt, uh, the findings were that a, a negative declaration was, uh, prepared. There are no environmental impacts. There are no mitigation measures required. We circulated the, uh, documents and no governmental or public, uh, member of the community or local adjacent cities provided any comments. So staff has recommended that the commission adopt resolution number twenty-eight forty-two, thereby approving the negative declaration and the coastal development permit. And that summarized, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So as I understand it, um, these used to be used to cool down part of the energy plant and they're just not being used anymore?
That's correct. So the, uh, cooling of the generators ceased and new equipment has been replaced. Um, replace the old outdated equipment and new equipment doesn't require that cooling process.
Okay, so if they don't need it, they're gonna plug it up then?
Yes.
Alright, any other questions for staff?
No, just the applicant.
Yep, applicant.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll open up public communications. First right goes the applicant.
Hey, good evening Commissioners, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm Tim Sisk, I'm with NRG Energy and the Environmental Manager and the lead uh, individual on this project. So, yeah, first of all, agree with the negative declaration analysis that was done. And also, and that, and that determination. And then also, we agree with recommendation to approve the coastal development. Or available for any questions on any specifics associated with this.
Alright, any questions?
I have a, just a couple, and it's more curiosity on my part. This is all good stuff. You guys know what you need to do. You don't use them. Just, um, the, the two bays that were plugged in two thousand eleven, are you gonna use the same method?
Yes.
As used back then? Same method? And that all worked fine? It went smoothly? Everything as well? And then there seems to be a lot of concern about the residual water. How long does it take the concrete to set?
That's a really good question. Uh, I can, I can, you know, just kind of thinking back and, and, uh, don't hold me specifically to this, but it, I believe it took a week to two weeks for it to cure last time.
So the concern is the water that is behind that until it sets and then you gotta figure out what to do with that water?
Yeah, and we've got to.
Of course you do.
Yeah, we've.
But I was just curious. It's not like a year from now or it's not like overnight, quick, quick concrete set.
Yep.
So it's marine bay, you saw that stuff. That, that's all. Just, I was just curious on my part.
So in two, speaking of that, in two thousand eleven, when you used the same curing process, uh, I, I read that you either discharge that water on the land side, back into the ocean if it's clean, or you take it to a site that's been contaminated. What did you end up doing with the water last, in two thousand eleven?
During, um, for that particular plug, we still had this opening here that we're gonna be close, uh, closing, plugging during this evolution open. So during that period, we tested that water, uh, actually ran it through some filtration and some, um, water treatment, uh, processes, and then it was discharged back, uh, into that, into these conduits that we're now plugging. So for this evolution, because we don't have, um, basically a, an avenue to, to send that water back to, to Santa Monica Bay, it's likely going to be, not likely, it will be put into trucks and then sent to a, a water treatment facility after we've done analytical and characterized it and determined where it can go.
Got you. And, and why do you plug these holes, these pipes?
Yeah, a couple reasons. One is that, uh, California, once through cooling policy, required that El Segundo shut down these particular units, unit four, December thirty-first of two thousand fifteen. And so, uh, we now have a responsibility as part of that MPDS permit program and that plan and that policy to, uh, plug these tunnels. Uh, otherwise, we continue to have to, um, run our once, uh, run the pumps, uh, in order to move the water and, and so we don't get, so it doesn't remain stagnant and we get nuisance orders and that sort of thing. So that all falls under a critical systems maintenance provision of the policy. Um, and so we want to obviously, uh, get away from, from that and continuing to have to do that. And also the permit fees associated with the MPDS permit will, uh, decrease substantially once we are able to plug the, plug the tunnels and then no longer have, have this water permit in order to discharge any longer.
And the plugs are on the land side of that seawall, is that right? So does that mean you still have several hundred feet of tunnel that run out into the bay?
That's correct.
And isn't that water in there stagnant even though it's, I mean, there's no circulation in there?
Yeah, probably to a certain degree. I think just logically it is and, and, um, uh, then again, we don't have that water kind of coming up on the, on the, on the, on the land side, uh, then creating a nuisance odor situation there. Don't have the oxygen in.
So, so those existing tunnels are not an environmental issue?
No.
Just, they're just sitting there unused and stagnant and become a reef essentially?
Yeah, I won't, I won't use the word reef. Been warned against that in the past.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But, uh, but, uh, but yeah, they're.
No one's told me not to use that.
Um, but yeah, they, they're going to continue to be there. They're under a California state lands lease. Um, and we're working with them on what the final disposition of those, uh, would be. Sure. But again, that's in their jurisdiction and where we are plugging these and within this jurisdiction.
Okay. So units, uh, one and two were demolished.
Correct.
And units three and four have no plans to be demolished?
Uh, I don't believe so at this time.
So what do you do with them? They just, they sit there forever?
I'm gonna invite up George Pianca, he was my manager, he's probably better equipped to answer that.
That's fine.
Hi, George Pianca, um, our director in, for NRG and environmental in the area. So, um, units, uh, uh, three and four, there has been some work. We did take the, uh, stacks down earlier in the year, uh, or the end of last year, we, we finished that work. Um, but also the units three and four serve and support the rest of the plant. When we, we talk about one and two retired, demoed, and we plugged those tunnels, we built units five through eight, and that's the new uh, combined cycle plant. And there's some infrastructure within, uh, units three and four that support that plant. So, um, but so there isn't any current plans to go anything, any further with, uh, the removal of units three and four aside from the stacks that we did, we did remove.
So there is energy being produced at the site right now?
Yes, certainly. There's, uh, it's a contract, uh, local utility, Edison. It's, um, it, uh, came online in two thousand thirteen. So it's, uh, yes, it's producing like five hundred and, uh, fifty, sixty megawatts, somewhere around there.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Uh, this is the site that's proposed for a desalinization plant, is that correct?
The, the, uh, West Basin has, you know, they have an EIR, uh, it's out. I think the com- comment period, uh, did close. Uh, but that is part of, um, the site they are evaluating. I know they looked at both parts of, uh, of, uh, north and si- and south option, but yes, there, there is a public process. That's not our process. It's a separate process.
And what will happen to the energy plant if that goes in?
Well, they, they, like I said, they did mention two, uh, two options. I think the north option, uh, which includes units three and four, uh, was, uh, uh, seemed to be the way they wrote it as a preferred location of the two. Uh, so if, uh, that project moves forward, uh, I know that's a, it's a generally a long process, DSal. Uh, they did include in their document, it would be the removal of units three and four to be able to accommodate um, a DSal facility. So, uh, like that, that is part of their project description.
Well, then that would, would that affect the energy production and the other newer units?
Uh, no, they, 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 the footprint that, uh, is in the EIR is, is specific to three and four. Uh, units three and four footprint, it wouldn't affect units five through eight.
Oh, because the reason I'm asking is you said that units three and four aren't being demolished because they support the new cons- the, the new units. Did I misunderstand?
Correct. They would have to, if, if that project moved forward, there's some, um, infrastructure, communications infrastructure, control room infrastructure there that, that supported the whole facility, the units three and four when they were operational as well as five through eight, the new plant. Um, so, uh, we'd have, have to plan the relocation of the control room.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is there, are there any lobsters left in those tunnels?
That was funny.
Yeah, page one eighty-eight, you don't call it a reef, but.
I'm a land-based person. I haven't, uh.
Thank you.
So the DSal thing aside, uh, is there ever a chance that units three and four could come back on, back online and you'd have to unplug these tunnels you're about to plug?
Uh, no, no chance of three and four coming back.
Any chance of having to unplug the tunnels?
Uh, that would be a consideration of how, uh, Poseidon would, or Poseidon, I'm sorry, West Basin would design their projects. Uh, uh, that would, that should be under their, their consideration, so.
Alright, thank you.
One more quick question. How many truckloads of water is it that you would actually be removing?
Yeah, that's right. Uh, between a hundred and ten and a hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was mentioned.
Probably about two, about two weeks, I think, is what we looked at.
Like ten, ten trucks a day or something like that, as I recall.
Alright, thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else wishing to, uh, make public comments? Alright, I'll close public communication and all further comments come from the dais. Anything else?
Did this come before planning commission in two thousand eleven?
It may have, but honestly, I do not remember. And I was on planning commission in two thousand eleven, did it?
No, it was a different process because it was associated with the construction of the new power plants. And so it was under jurisdiction of the state.
See, I didn't forget. I would remember the lobsters. That was like, I'd be out there with a cage every day if I knew there was lobsters in the tunnels. I mean, I'd have a little side gig. Um, alright, well, thank you for the presentation. A lot of information provided and it seems, um, you know, despite all the, um, formalities of the environmental report, it's, it's a pretty simple matter of it's no longer being used. We're gonna plug it and we're gonna get rid of the water so we can move forward. So I, I see no problems with it.
No problems here.
Nope.
Alright, well, I'll accept the motion.
I will move, uh, let's see, to adopt resolution number two eight four one. Uh, there you go.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, for the record, that is also a final decision by the planning commission that's subject to appeal.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, gentlemen. That brings us to continued business none. And now agenda item J, report from planning, building, safety director or designee. Sam, anything?
Oh, yes, good evening, um, Commissioners. In fact, uh, two thousand eleven was quite an event when they demolished, um, their units. Um, they used dynamite, if you recall. Uh, I remember some of the staff members went to the Chevron site and, um, saw the explosion. It was quite a, quite an event. Um, during this time around, they specifically said they're not gonna use dynamite. Um, the only thing I wanted to mention is, um, as you may know, um, the city has embarked in trying to get, um, um, you know, to, to try to make improvements throughout the city. Um, and, uh, we try to make it with, uh, data-driven information. So, um, over the last, um, um, twelve, eighteen months, um, we surveyed residents, businesses, um, and even our own employees. And, uh, last week, we started, um, a new survey where it'd be a transaction-based. So, um, there is, um, iPads at, um, at various different, um, uh, counters throughout the city, including the library, I believe. Um, and so right after that transaction where you got a business tax or you got a permit or you did a library transaction, um, you would go to the iPad and, and do a little quick survey. And so, um, I urge everyone to, uh, let us know how we're doing. Thank you.
Very good.
Do we get an iPad after our meeting where people can tell us how we did?
Boy, I hope not.
Alright, thank you, Sam. Uh, upcoming agenda items?
I, I shouldn't leave that on the agenda because I do intend to do that every other meeting.
Okay.
Sorry.
Not a problem. Planning Commissioner comments?
Just want to make mention that next Thursday is the second of three art walks happening uh, throughout the downtown Smokey Hollow area. It's a very exciting time for everybody and uh, loads of venues and participation and a good time is had by all.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, and Greg, I do want to circle back on the bike paths and have the, the, um, I'm blanking, the maintenance, yeah, the maintenance, sorry?
Ken Berkman?
Yeah, yeah, just come in and tell us, you know, the, the plan, the, the master bike plan was approved, I don't know, four years ago, five years ago, something like that. Let us know what's been done since then and what his look ahead is five years from now. Because I think it's, uh, and not just because Jay's on the commission now, but I think as far as moving El Segundo forward as business-friendly and forward-looking, like bike paths are something I want to see happening around town as, as the city continues to grow. So if we can get a report on that, let them know where, you know, planning commission wants to know where we're at. If something.
It's, um, it's good timing. Uh, he is scheduled to be before the planning commission next month.
Okay.
And he'll be reporting on, um, um, and he, he comes to the planning commission once a year to report on what CPAC has, uh, has, uh, itemized as their priority. And I think that would be a good opportunity for him to explain that.
Perfect. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for that, Ryan. Yeah, and to that end, you guys have all seen the bird scooters.
Yeah.
Cruising around, you know, they're, um, uh, people either love them or hate them, I've decided. Uh, but, you know, that, that is a change. It's a fundamental change in what's happening with transportation in not only our city but all over, all over America. And so, uh, you're not allowed to ride these scooters on the sidewalk. That, I, that is illegal, I believe. And so, you know, if you're gonna have kids, you're gonna have adults, you're gonna have people using these things. Bike paths are actually, I believe, the right place to, to ride those things. Not, not that, uh, uh, I want to inundate our, our city with scooters, but at least it would be a safer place. So, and as bike share comes in and, uh, as honestly more economic development happens on the east side of town, last mile issues, um, bikes are gonna be very important. Multimodal. It's, uh, you know, these living streets. It's, uh, it's, it's a, it's a big important step and I'm very excited about, uh, Smokey Hollow for that reason.
You're absolutely right, Jay. And for those, uh, who may be interested in this matter, um, at home, um, uh, our police chief is gonna be doing a report on this as a follow-up to the, you know, the bird, um, they call it bird droppings. So they, it happened.
That was Tracy Weaver's adage.
Right, it happened, um, uh, the weekend before the last art walk. And so they've had some, a chance to be at our city. Um, and so, um, the council has asked the police chief to work with public works and the other departments to provide a report at next council meeting, next Tuesday. So if anyone's interested, uh, please tune in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
I, I do have a question. Is there, what's the plan for Smokey Hollow plan to get in front of city council? Have you guys picked a date or has a date been picked for that?
Yes, the second meeting in August. Um, the reason is we had to recirculate the, the, um, environmental impact report and we, which was mentioned at the meeting.
That's right, yes.
And we want to get past the, the recirculation period and then give enough time to comment if we get any comments, I mean, to respond to any comments. So we're scheduling it for, I think it's the twenty-third of August.
Good.
Alright, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. Our next meeting is July twenty-sixth at five thirty. Thank you. Thank you.